And I get to sit beside, uh...
We're gonna be talking about the master plan.
I get to sit close to Ms. Murray.
That's right.
And last, right?
Board of Education election is time.
We don't, uh, we don't need an indication or anything like that.
Yes, not me, but yes, there is.
I don't think we ever do.
I was thinking earlier myself. There are, um...
Hey, uh...
Was there none, was there none enough?
Four spots to five rooms.
You ever go to that, uh, the breakfast, the Yonkers Club from Children's Village?
Three spots and four rooms.
You don't go? September 7th, I'm, I'm, um, guest waiter this year. I have to put you down for...
The Board of Education was...
It's a day, it's this Friday, but it starts at 7:00. But I have to, I have to make reservations so they know how much food to make. Okay. Ask Wayne, he'll come.
I'm gonna start going out of town here saying, I gotta go.
Very confusing.
Your mic's on.
Huh?
Your mic's hot.
That's, I'm just saying, I gotta start going away here soon.
Oh. Supposed to go to the beach. I'm not looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Here. Eric.
Not looking forward to the seven and a half hour drive.
Falls on it.
Adderice.
How are these things picking up? Do we need to move it?
I'm trying, I'm trying to talk Randy Wagner.
Well, there you go.
Well, Mr. Becker's, uh, present, so now we can get started. And I'm just, how are you, Mr. Becker? So, uh, good morning to everyone. Uh, like to thank the Board of Education for hosting our joint meeting here at your wonderful facility here this morning. Uh, present, uh, we have, uh, all five county commissioners and, uh, I see, uh, a majority of your board members. Are we waiting on anyone else?
I think we're all here.
Okay. Uh, so with that, good morning, and then I'd just like to go ahead and I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mrs. Williams, and then she can, uh, tell us what's on our agenda for today.
Thank you, President Klein. Good morning.
Oh, thank, oh, thank you.
Thanks for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, President. Excuse me.
That's all right. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about Ms. Stouffer.
I changed your name, President Baker. Good morning.
Don't worry about it, Ms. Stouffer.
President Baker, Vice President Klein, and Commissioners. I do apologize.
No, no, no. I've been called worse. Did you hear him? He called, he called you, Mrs. Stouffer. Did you hear that?
No.
She heard me.
A little levity's a good thing. Okay. We're here this morning to present the Educational Facilities Master Plan, and we have with us our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Jeffrey Prue, and staff, Rob Rollins, Director of Facilities Planning and Development, Mark Mills, Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations, and Chad Criswell, Senior Project Manager and Planning Supervisor. They will be making our presentation, and we hope that you'll ask questions afterwards and offer comments. Uh, your comments will help us gauge, um, the support that we'll have for, uh, this plan and will help us with some decision-making going forward, um, as we update this yearly. So I'm gonna turn things over to Dr. Michael, the Superintendent, and hope that he doesn't mess things up as I did. So, Dr. Michael, you're on.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming today. Uh, today's an opportunity, much like we've done in the past, to share about our Educational Facilities Master Plan. Uh, with almost fifty facilities in the county, uh, over a thousand acres of property to take care of, over three point four, counting this building, three point five million, three point five million square feet to maintain annually and to keep updated, uh, with roof, boiler, chiller, uh, doors, envelope of the building, uh, floors, walls, ceiling, paint, those types of things. This is a very important topic that we need to, um, address every year and keep track of how we're gonna, uh, avoid a situation where we get to the point that we have a significant amount of deferred maintenance or, um, you know, end up throwing good money after bad as a result of not keeping up with our facilities and maintenance efforts. So today, we're gonna share a little bit. Uh, staff came to me, um, back in the fall into the winter, and we're gonna present the same plan that we presented, uh, over the last number of years, and I said, "That doesn't make any sense." Uh, it's been clear that that plan cannot be supported or sustained long-term. We need to start thinking about our facilities lasting longer. Uh, we won't be replacing them at the rate that we'd like to see them replaced, maybe, uh, every fifty years at the most. Uh, so we need to look at it a different way and a different plan. So they came back this spring, uh, where we're gonna start looking at, not by choice, but probably by necessity, how we might combine facilities, how we can reduce operating cost. Um, again, it's not things that we necessarily want to do, but things we think we'll have to do from a fiscally responsible standpoint and based on the economic circumstances of Washington County Public Schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Prue and staff.
Morning, Commissioners and Board Members. Uh, as Mrs. Williams indicated, this is our Educational Facilities Master Plan. Uh, it is updated annually, uh, and we'll roll to the slides I can. Staff can get us set up to the slideshow on the screens. So the Educational Facility Master Plan evaluates where we are in terms of our community. Uh, what are the developments that are, uh, are coming on the horizon? How are they expanding? How are they developing? Uh, what sort of enrollment changes are we seeing? Uh, we take a look at our facility inventory to get an assessment of how is each building performing? Uh, do we have the available seats that we need? Uh, are those facilities in a declining stage? And how do we rank them, uh, to be ready for, for renovations? It also reviews our board policies. Um, it's, it's integral to, up to, to make note here that this is updated annually. So we can look at a plan one year and change the next based on changing demographics in the community, uh, changing needs within our schools. Uh, and ultimately, we're looking to build a fiscally responsible plan, and this becomes the basis for the five-year capital improvement program, what we just refer to as the CIP. Uh, of course, that we will submit, uh, to both the, the state and the county, uh, for long-term funding. So that gives you an overview of, of where we are moving forward. Uh, Mr. Rollins is gonna give you a sense of where we are with the infrastructure and what the plan looks like, uh, for the coming five years.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Um, just some statistics here. The, uh, that Dr. Michael mentioned, we have eleven hundred acres of property that we maintain, and we have forty-seven buildings with students in them. Uh, these numbers don't include this building and the property we sit on right now, nor does it include the eight-twenty Commonwealth property where the transportation center is. Uh, that's why Dr. Michael said three point five mil-, uh, three point five million square feet. We have that many, uh, but in schools, we have three point three seven. So it's important to note on this, on, on this slide, with forty-seven schools, twenty-four of them were built in the seventies or earlier. So we have a real aging, uh, inventory of facilities. Uh, ten of those are elementary schools. When we look at, uh, the ideal preventive maintenance program, uh, we'd like to replace buildings every fifty years. Uh, we look at our roofs, we have, uh, life cycles for all our systems that we look at. So when we come to you with systemic project requests, uh, for replacement of those systems, uh, these are the kind of years we're hoping to get out of those systems when we put them in. And of course, our buildings, we have forty-seven. That would relate to needing to replace almost one a year, uh, to keep up a fifty-year life cycle on the buildings. Last year we came, uh, we, last year's Educational Facility Master Plan, which was presented to our board and approved and then sent on to the county, uh, looked like this. Uh, we had three years between middle schools that we were looking at at the time. Uh, and that would relate to about a hundred and forty-one-year life cycle that would be, need to be sustained for each of those buildings. We get that cycle, life cycle by multiplying the number of buildings simply by the number of years between openings. If we're on a three-year cycle, it would, we'd have to replace a building every one hundred and forty-one years or expect one to last that long. What was approved by the, the County Commissioners in, in its CIP, uh, put four years between those projects, which would relate to a expected life cycle of a hundred and eighty-eight years between school buildings. So, based on this, as Dr. Michael said, we need to, we, we looked at how we can come up with a responsible plan and how we can improve that replacement cycle, how we can improve operational efficiency, at the same time do that at the lowest cost possible with construction. Uh, we also wanted to improve our early childhood education opportunities. So we looked at elementary schools. Uh, one of the reasons we looked at elementary schools is we looked to our neighbors to the, to the east, in Carroll and Frederick. Carroll has a student population just about the same size as ours, but they have five less elementary schools. Frederick County has a population, student population almost double Washington counties. Uh, they have about one and a half times more elementary schools. So they're not doubling their elementary schools for double the population. They only have one and a half. Their schools have more capacity. The statewide average for elementary school capacity is about five hundred students per, per school. Washington County has sixteen schools that are lower than five hundred. In fact, we have ten that are less than three hundred students. So we started looking at elementary schools that were, had adjacencies that might allow us to combine them. First, we looked at Hickory Elementary and Fountain Rock Elementary. We looked at Old Forge and Greenbrier. Just as a note that I didn't say in the beginning, the, the beige, uh, as noted on the, uh, slides, the beige areas are schools that are greater than four hundred capacity, and the light areas are, uh, schools that are less than three hundred. We also looked at Potomac Heights and Fountaindale Elementary. From a construction standpoint, we're starting to look at a prototype school design. We'd like to propose that. We think that it can save money, lower the design cost, use a common educational, uh, specification. We can also design it like we did Jonathan Hager, uh, to be able to be expandable. At, uh, at Hager, we built a three-round school, but we left area on the building pad to be able to increase, uh, the capacity of that school, two more rounds or ten more classrooms. It could go up to a seven hundred and eighty-five now student capacity. Right. Uh, one of the keys on a, on a, using a prototype school, though, is to build the schools fairly rapidly. Uh, if you spread them out too far, educational specifications change, technology changes, security can change, uh, just, uh, and construction methods can change, and it might be that you have a design that is no longer efficient or good to build. But if we build them in, in fairly rapid succession, contractor familiarity helps. Uh, the, the, change orders can be reduced through the refined designs, and we'd have less requested changes, uh, internally by building them one after the other. The ed spec stays the same. Thanks, Jeff. So looking at these six schools that we listed on the maps, you can see that they have a combined capacity of eighteen hundred students, combined square footage of two hundred and forty-four, and we maintain seventy-three acres of those schools. Also to note, three of those schools are on septic and well-water systems. And we'd really like to get our old schools on public water systems. I think that's important from a health and safety standpoint, as well as just operational efficiency. Five of those six schools are open-type schools. So I know from the, um, Task Force for Security, you know, we looked at, the, one of the things we looked at was reducing the number of open schools. Uh, five of these six could be eliminated if we followed this plan. Also, there's twelve portable classrooms at those, at those buildings. If we build, uh, the three new schools, we're hoping, uh, to be approved, uh, we would eliminate those twelve portable classrooms.
So when you build three new schools, how does that affect a hundred and eighty-eight-year, uh, plan?
Right. Uh, I'm gonna get to that a little bit later, but, uh...
That's fine.
Okay? All right. So with the three new schools, i- if we built them all at that seven hundred and eighty-five student level, uh, right off the bat, if the enrollment in the county supported, uh, building them out that big, uh, we'd have twenty-three hundred seats, and we'd increase five hundred seats about, above what we have right now in capacity. But the square footage of those buildings only increases by fourteen thousand. So we're getting five hundred seats for fourteen thousand square feet. That's, that's really good efficiency there. Also, from an acreage standpoint, we'd like to build one of those schools right out here on the property that we have. All the amenities are here, and it doesn't cost the county or the school board anything to use the land we have. Uh, the other two schools, we'd have to find property and figure out how to bring water and sewer if it's not there already. Hopefully, we can find property that it's close or it's already there. So our, our acreage would drop by forty. We'd have ourselves on public water systems. They wouldn't be open schools, and there'd be no portable classrooms. So if we were to follow this plan, right now, this is what the county looks like. The beige areas are schools that are over four hundred students, and the white ones, uh, on the perimeter mainly, are schools that are under four hundred. We're building Sharpsburg Elementary School over the next couple of years. We're getting ready to go out to bid at the end of this month, in fact. So when that opens, that'll be another school that's above four hundred. If we follow the plan that we're presenting to you, uh, those other areas, the, the six schools would be filled in with three, and you'd have the core of the county in larger schools. Uh, we're reducing the number of, uh, schools overall. Interesting to note, these blue and orange dots represent active and active developments and developments that are in concept phase. It might come to fruition. If you look at where we're gonna have the schools with that capacity, it mirrors where the development is. So if we're looking at, uh, school capacity as an engine for, uh, development, also, uh, there's possibilities there. Then I think, Matt, I turn it over to Jeff.
So we wanna try to lay out for you again, you know, what is the cost of the plan? I think that's definitely of concern. One of the things that Dr. Michael has charged us with as well is to come up with a plan that is also fiscally responsible. So we wanna walk you through some, what some of these numbers look like. So the six schools we're talking about are some of the lotus, six of the seven are, are, six of the schools are in our bottom seven lowest-rated schools, elementary schools in our facility assessment. So within the next number of years, those schools will need to be at least renovated if, if not replaced. So if you look at renovating these six identified schools, you're looking at a total cost of a hundred and fifty-eight million, where seventy-nine million of that comes from local funds. Uh, all six will exceed fifty years in the next decade, uh, in terms of their age. Construction of three new buildings pales in comparison to that where it will cost a hundred and twelve million or forty-six million dollars less. Um, forty million in local funding, which is thirty-one million dollars less in local dollars. So to create this plan, building three new schools, closing six as opposed to renovating those, saves the county thirty-one million dollars in the near term. You know, whether that is over the next ten years, over the next twenty years, but it's a savings of thirty-one million dollars to the county and to its taxpayers. From a land needs perspective, as Mr. Rollins mentioned, uh, we propose that the first, uh, school is built on this site, so there's no additional land cost today. Uh, we could begin working on designs, uh, without having to, to wait to find the appropriate piece of land. We have it available to us. Uh, we would also need to find the land then for the second and third sites at locations to be determined, and we would work with county staff, uh, through that process to find the appropriate space, which again, saves money in the near term because we have land available to us. So it, it saves on overall costs moving forward.
Uh, excuse me. Of those six sites that you're, uh, referencing there, uh, on the renovation cost, none of those sites would, uh, work for one of the other two school sites?
Potentially.
We would look at that when we're looking at the land, but they might not be in the right location if you're trying to combine schools. You wanna try to center that new school. We, we wouldn't throw them out necessarily. We'd consider them, uh, but they may or not be. It, also, uh, some of the sites are pretty tight, and so if you're, if you're trying to put a new school next to it, it, an existing school, uh, and keep it open, it might be difficult to do. But we'll definitely look at it.
They'll go to utilities, too.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah.
Additionally, we think we can reduce our operational costs. Based on what we saw through the construction of Jonathan Hager and the closing of Winter Street in Conica Jig, each new school will save approximately one point two five million dollars annually in general fund dollars over similar operations of the two separate schools. Uh, we reduce our acreage to maintain, we reduce the number of buildings to maintain. So as we think about the other building infrastructure systems, boilers, chillers, roofing systems, uh, overall envelope, we're dealing now with one as opposed to two, uh, or three as opposed to six. The building square footage to maintain, uh, is almost about the same, only an increase of fourteen thousand squeat, uh, fourteen thousand square feet, but we, again, receive additional capacity of five hundred and fifty students out of that fourteen thousand square feet, which is very efficient. Uh, we also can reduce the number of support administrative positions to hire in the future. Uh, so again, six print building principles today compared to three building principles moving forward. Uh, as we've talked about through the Security Task Force, in relation to Senate Bill twelve sixty-five, the need for, for school resource officers for, for security, and how does that impact, um, county and city operations? Uh, there's potentially a, a, an opportunity to, to reduce that number as well, as well as savings in food services and custodians and so forth. Mr. Myers?
When you're doing all this, this is great as far as saving, you know, the, the, uh, number of principals and so forth. But what about classroom size?
In terms of student size, student...
I mean, if, you, you know, you're increasing the number of students per school, obviously. I mean, i- is there been accommodations for the number of classrooms to keep the classroom size to the appropriate number?
We would. There'd be no change in, in the student population per classroom, uh, you know, and of course, that number fluctuates. One of the bonuses that I think we'll see in a, in an upcoming slide is, uh, and I would defer to our instructional staff, but, uh, in a larger building, we're able to better manage, uh, bubbles in the student enrollment and the population because now an influx of fifteen students in a particular grade can be managed better with five classrooms per grade than it can with two classrooms per grade. We could spread that load a little bit better. So we have an opportunity there, uh, to flatline potentially student enrollment per classroom a little bit better than we can in small schools.
Very important.
Uh, in terms of educational considerations with this plan, uh, first and foremost, we reduce portable classrooms, uh, which increases safety and supervision. You know, we're, we talked a lot through Senate Bill twelve sixty-five and the Security Task Force about what can we do to increase security in locations where we have portable classrooms? Well, this plan will actually eliminate the portable classrooms, uh, that are available at those current six sites. Uh, we provide additional delicate, dedicated pre-kindergarten space. So one of our initiatives, as you know, has been early childhood education and bringing students into pre-education, pre-kindergarten education environments that are managed by the school system. And we have an opportunity to build that additional space through the education specification process. We provide newer state-of-the-art facilities to more students at a faster rate. So if we can, in the next ten years, outfit these three new schools as opposed to, let's say, renovating the six schools over, let's say, twenty-year period, we bring new state-of-the-art classrooms to our students at a much faster rate. We can increase educational opportunities for students. Again, we can, we can do more in a larger school environment than potentially we can in a smaller environment 'cause it takes larger resources to work across multiple buildings, uh, you know, several buildings as opposed to fewer buildings. So we, we can, uh, work through that process. Providing full-time support staff. So in a smaller building, you may have a half-time counselor, a half-time gym teacher, half-time music teacher. In our larger buildings, it's one dedicated staff person in that building that are there, uh, on a regular basis every day. So we have that opportunity as well. Additional rounds better mitigate the student-teacher ratios as we just discussed through your question, Commissioner Myers. Uh, we also provide full-size gymnasiums and playfields, uh, for student and community use as well. So as you know, anytime we're building a new building, we're doing the, the full-size gym, so they're available for our community use on a regular basis. Looking at the large capital projects, what this might look like in terms of our, our... Looking at the large capital projects, what this might look like in terms of our capital improvement plan moving forward, you do see a change where we have flipped out, honestly, our middle school renovations that were in the plan to work through the new school, the new school prototype designs and to get them to fruition. There is two years between each of the openings, with the first intended opening to be for fiscal year '24, with the last one in '28. So across a approximate five-year span there, we would open the three new schools, each of them two years apart. Commissioner Baker, you asked about the expected life cycle. Reducing the life cycle here is a good first step. We go from 47 buildings, replacing one every two years as a 94 plan, we would drop to 44 buildings. If we can replace one every two moving forward, we're down to 88 years. So we are able to take six years off the plan. It's a good first step. There may be more consolidation that we need to look for moving forward, but this is a good step to get started. So funding considerations, looking at capital funding from the local perspective, we do increase the average local CIP request by approximately $2 million above what's shown in FY '19. But we do save approximately $15 million over the cost of renovating, excuse me, $15 million off the cost of operating the six renovated buildings over the 10 years. So when we go back to the 1.25 million savings in operating costs at each of those buildings, within the first 10 years, we can save $15 million. Beyond that, we can save approximately $3.75 million in operating costs for each subsequent year, once the three are all open together. So we do have a savings there, so we can turn those dollars, the general fund dollars, back into additional programs, potentially reduce classroom sizes, potentially new programs, you know, more counselors, there's a myriad of things we can do with that money, reflective of some of the initiatives and some of the challenges we face demographically that we shared with you through our budget presentation back in February. Capital needs are reduced. So again, $31 million in savings in construction costs, building three as opposing to renovate the six. We can reduce the deferred maintenance, actually eliminate the deferred maintenance on those six schools. So again, as Dr. Michael mentioned, sometimes when we are looking at a building that is potentially beyond its useful life, we're throwing good money after bad. We've gotta fix this, because that building has to make it a little bit longer, whereas potentially, we should be replacing that building or replacing the entire system, so we can reduce our maintenance costs. It is a short-term increase with long-term overall savings. Again, looking at $2 million in the near term to save $31 million in the out years. That's the savings we were trying to impress upon you. Also, a reduction in future systemic costs. So again, you know, boilers, chillers, roofs, window systems in all of those six buildings that need to be replaced can come off the books in replacement of the new buildings. Looking at the state considerations, we're not affecting our FY 2020 state CIP requests. This is approximately $12.5 million for large capital projects and $5.5 million for systemic projects. We're not changing the FY '20 request. Moving forward through FY '21 through FY '28, it's anywhere between 8.2 million and 10.9 million for large capital projects. Based on what we're seeing, based on the allocation we received in FY '19, and based on discussions at the state level with an increase in capital funding for school construction at the state level that's been bandered about and talked about, we think getting that window is highly reasonable. We think that really is within the wheelhouse of what we can expect. Over the last number of years, on average, Washington County has received approximately 8.5 million in capital funding, and if there's an increase in the state allocation, we believe we can get up to the 10.5 million that we may need to bring this project to fruition. The state is considering changes to systemic project funding. That is a concern. There has been some discussion that all systemic funding will be local and will not be eligible for state support. So that is something we will have to continue to evaluate and monitor moving forward. We also believe that the use of prototype design could receive support from the state. There's a lot of discussion during the last legislative session of on-school construction and the use of prototype designs. And if we are one of the first to bring that to fruition, there may be additional opportunities at the state level for additional funding support for prototype designs to show that that's a system and a design process that can work and can save both local and state dollars. So we'd be encouraged to do that and to work through the state delegation to see if additional funding support is available. Looking at challenges and opportunities, some of the challenges, you know, clearly our communities are familiar with the current schools. As we approached the facilities committee with this for initial design, initial concern that we saw from the community, additional feedback was about, you know, we like our school, we like our neighborhood school. But again, we have a fiscally responsible plan based on current funding realities, and we wanna work with you and partner with you on a plan that is fiscally responsible for the community moving forward. Three less facilities to maintain in the future is also a savings for the community. Future redistricting will be required. You know, we can't necessarily say that as we look at collapsing Greenbrier and Old Forge into one school, that district may not look the same as it does today. And so, you know, it will be a redistricting concern that we will have to work through with our community, with our facilities enrollment advisory committee, and we would be looking for your support as we work through that process. But again, we provide more elementary students, newer facilities at a faster rate, and additionally pre, additional pre-kindergarten seats, which is important to our academic growth of our students long-term. There is an increase in the local CIP required. It does not affect the 2020 request. So in the near term, as you're starting to think, and Ms. Greaves and I had just a brief email conversation last night about the next year's budget calendar, thinking ahead into where we are, and does not affect your 2020 plan. And the Board of Education can provide an alternate plan in FY '19. So a year down the road, if we determine that, you know, collectively that this plan is just not gonna work, it's a one-year plan. We can move forward, we can shift gears again next year, similar to the way we shifted gears from the '18 plan, or the '17 plan to the '18 plan. There are unpredictable factors, and we will have to work through those, but the plan does provide flexibility. So again, the concept is to provide a prototype design that could be built initially as a three-round, four-round, or five-round, similar to what we did with Jonathan Hager, so that we can be flexible and nimble with the demographic changes within our community and within our neighborhoods. And lastly, we wanna make you aware of major systemic projects that are on the horizon. We did submit Boonsborough High School, excuse me, Boonsborough Elementary and South Hagerstown High School for roof replacements in, for FY '19 capital improvement funding. They were not funded at the state, so we're likely gonna bring those forward for FY '20 funding. You can also see other large replacements there. North Hagerstown High School's chiller, Smithsburg High School's HVAC system is probably the largest on the plan. That could be upwards of $6.5, $7.5 million, and you see a number of other systems that have to be replaced long-term that we will be presenting as part of the capital improvement project as we move into the fall. And with that, I think we can accept any questions that members may have. Mr. Myers?
On cost savings, I mean, I'm obviously very huge on that. Rob, whenever, and maybe you're already doing this, on your projects, schools that were, that you have done over the past, I guess, year since you've been here, have you ever considered, or do you all specify, say, a brand of chiller, boiler, and so forth, that when it comes to efficiencies, that the people would, I mean, you would have in all schools of the same brand, the same model, I mean, not model, but I mean, that you would be able to purchase directly and place to the contractor to install? Do you all do that now?
We don't do it right now. There's been some talk downstate about maybe even collectively at the state level, having a menu of...
More and more of that.
Components that...
I know Mr. Barr hates it, because they can inspect his switchgear, which is a big-ticket item, and they put it on site and he has to install it.
Right.
So that was one. It, I guess, just another big cost savings, you know, I know what these portable classrooms cost, and I guess it just, it makes me almost cringe when I see a brand-new school being built, and then the first thing you do is start moving in the portable classrooms. Is it true that the state does not allow a little bit of thought process into expansion in the initial construction of the building?
I think the state always encourages us to plan our buildings to be expandable.
Not expandable, I'm talking about how is space available on, you know, that you know coming down. I mean, I see that you have the possibility of planned expand, you know, development, and we know it's coming.
So what the state does is we look at our enrollment projections. We present them to the state, and when we are requesting money for a building, they're looking at what the projected enrollment is seven years from when we ask for funding. So it's usually about four years beyond when it opens. So they will fund the capacity of what we think it'll be four years beyond when we open. So in that way, they are trying to right-size the school for some growth.
But it would be up to the county and the Board of Ed. If we put our thought into it just prior to building, that would be our expense.
Well, if the growth is...
Of where it is designed, and you see it coming, you know, these developments pop up within a year, it would be to the county and the Board of Ed's expense to basically build a bigger school to eliminate knowing that you're gonna have to bring in portable classrooms.
Yeah, once, if we could see it coming within that seven-year period, the state will actually let us count those people that don't even exist yet, and they'll fund their portion of the project. If we think it's coming 10 years out, you know, they won't do that. But what we've done, like with Jonathan Hager, we've gone ahead and stubbed out that building, and we know exactly where the addition's gonna go and that type of thing, which substantially reduce costs when you've gone ahead and run, you know, conduit and sewer and those types of things, and then you're set up to do that. But the state will let us use, you know, students that don't exist yet, as long as we can project them, and they're within the projections of the state as well.
But not once you're coming out of the ground. If you're in mid-construction...
I'm not even suggesting...
Right. Yeah. At that point, like at Salem Avenue, if you remember, there was an addition put on that building midstream, and I think that cost was all borne by the local taxpayers.
And I think specifically, to answer your question, if the state said you can support 400 students, and the county and the Board of Ed decided we were building 600 students, the additional capacity above 400 students, the state would fund up to 400 at the 71-29 split rate, the county would be on the hook for the rest if that's what we collectively decided that we were gonna build. I think that's the point of your question.
Yeah, but also, we all know that those portable classrooms per square foot are very costly.
Yes.
And that would be a decision. I guess the question is, the state would have no buy-in unless we changed something.
Yeah, and I don't think, to Dr. Michael's credit and the school boards, I don't think we've installed a portable classroom for eight or nine years now. So we've been able to avoid new portable classrooms. We may have moved a couple, but...
It's only Frederick County. And I got one last question, and I'll shut up. We've had a lot of conversation lately about community centers, and I see here where, I guess I somewhat applaud where we can be opened up to the public. Has there ever been a conversation, or could we start to have a conversation with commissioners in regards to a cooperative, more of a cooperative effort of, instead of us going out and building one in Clear Spring and Hancock and Sharpsburg or wherever, or one large one on the Sharpsburg Pike, where we could expand or, you know, have a cooperative effort with the school board to have these community centers in the schools themselves, and better utilize the square footage, you know, the gyms and so forth. And it would wear them a little bit, but I believe that those monies could be diverted to our school system. We'd all benefit.
Right. So, you know, that would...
Say, our gyms, our gyms are well-used, particularly all the new buildings with the full-size gym. What we haven't been able to do for the community, and the community kinda chastises this for it, is we don't have bleacher space and things like that. So youth groups come in, or the tournament comes in, or whatever, and you have, you know, 200 people trying to sit down somewhere, and they have lawn chairs and lined up against the wall and standing there. But we haven't been able to have the resources to dedicate additional square footage that we wouldn't use during the day. I mean, that space would just be bleacher space or bare space that we wouldn't be able to utilize. We've put that space into the classroom, because the state limits us, it's all about square footage. So when you dedicate, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 square feet to bleachers, that's 3,000 or 4,000 square feet we could've put into classrooms, and our teachers are anxious for that square footage. But I think those are opportunities through local money we can look at. How do we add, you know, a community room, a couple of community-type almost classrooms connected to the gym or cafeteria, that all that could be used, particularly in elementary schools. Middle schools, and particularly high schools, are used, you know, hard at night with athletic teams and things like that. But all the, you know, community gyms that we've built are available. I think Park and Rec is working with us on almost all the buildings. I can remember back in 2008 or '09, when we opened the three buildings all at once, there was gonna be this $42,000 of additional county money to help support utilities and things like that at those three sites. So now we have eight or nine sites like that, and I don't think we've ever really collected on any of that money. But they are available, and they're used heavily, and I think it would be, if you're gonna build things like that, why not just tack on another oversized room or something if it's for, you know, groups to gather or something like that? Maybe it's connected to the gym. The other thing we've done with our gymnasiums, we purposely separated them a little bit from the building. We have ways of isolating them from the rest of the building. One of the mistakes I think we made in some of the early designs, you know, once you were in the gym, you were in the whole building, and now that's no longer true. So it's important, we could do that with the community center as well. Gymnasium, maybe cafeteria, maybe one or two rooms for other types of community use, and it's still, you could only, you only unlock a certain portion of the building rather than the whole building having access to the public.
That's a whole lot of problems that we get from those.
Right, and I've been involved in a project like that in Carroll County, where they actually had an oversized gymnasium, but then they also had a community room attached to the end of that. People could, they use that for senior citizens and other things, exercise classes during the day. It probably wasn't as isolated as what we need to have it done today with the security issues and things we have now 20 years past when we did that one, but those are all solvable.
I think the thing we're hoping for is the county commissioners and staff of the county would start thinking about, even this plan requires a substantial amount of financial resources beyond what we're currently receiving. If the state suddenly cuts off money for systemic projects and pushes all that to the locals, I mean, that's gonna be huge. Most of the other counties, particularly counties our size and larger, I mean, what we do here is if it's not state-supported, we generally don't do it. The two roof projects that the state didn't support this year, we pushed them out a year, we just continue to patch those and things like that to the extent that we can. But other counties go ahead and, well beyond what the state's supporting, they fully support whole projects at the county level. We're gonna have to start looking at that at some point here in the near future. So we have to substantially invest in capital resources at some point. So we're hoping, we've demonstrated one method that we can see that we can reduce long-term, but even with this $31 million reduction in these six schools, it's still real money to put up the three schools. And even to reduce our replacement to potentially 88 years would require right after these three schools, you know, every two years, continuing to open schools. The other big challenge we have, with the exception of E. Russell Hicks, all the middle schools were open in the '70s. Well, soon, they're gonna be 50-plus years old. Majority of them are still partially open or completely open, except for the perimeter classrooms, and there's gonna be a substantial amount of work to do with those, and they're large buildings. They're not the size of an elementary. They're large buildings. And pushing out Springfield, pushing out Western Heights is just deferring something that we should be doing real soon, from an instructional standpoint and from a maintenance standpoint. So at some point, you know, we gotta sharpen our pencil here, and you can give us feedback on this plan. If you want us to do something different, we need that direction. But even with this aggressive plan, it still requires a lot more money. The state changes what they're doing with systemic projects, that will require a substantial investment in capital money. And even with this plan, we're still looking at 88 years, which for some buildings that are already 50, 60 years old, it still could be 20 years away before their turn comes. So... That's all we have, unless there's additional questions or thoughts?
Just a few comments and maybe a few questions. You know, generally, the concept is appealing that you increase efficiency. That's a good thing. I think citizens expect that of their government. This is something that I think you've been able to demonstrate rather well. The 50-year lifespan, I'm questioned sometimes about that. Could you just describe why there's a 50-year lifespan placed on the school? Is it because population changes in different parts of the county, so the school is no longer centrally located? Is it just because it's too expensive to update and maintain an older building? What is it that gives you that 50-year number?
Well, let me just, you know, our goal would be 50 years would necessarily replace it, but to renovate it might be another option. You know, facelift to the building, new carpet, you know, changing rooms, design, painting, things like that. So it's not necessarily always replacing the school. What we do find is the state supports a replacement school and a renovated school at the same amount per square foot. So sometimes, and I mean, why do you see, you know, Martin's Grocery Store or whatever built, and 20 years later, they completely tear it down and build a whole new Martin's Grocery Store? Grocery Store? Just from what's changed in their marketplace, it's cheaper to tear it down and rebuild it than it is to remodel it. So, we look at that, and we have to go through a justification of that for the state, but I'll let Rob respond to the 50-year question.
Well, Dr. Michael's right. The buildings just wear out, especially the types that were built in the '70s, which are construction that just doesn't last as long. There's also educational considerations. The whole way we teach, all those schools built in the '70s were mainly open schools and things. So, whether we, as Dr. Michael said, whether we renovate them, or fully modernize them, or tear them down and build new, it's the same cost. It really is. If we build new, we can incorporate probably better all the technologies and all the room sizes and all the support spaces that are called for today that weren't called for back when they were built. So, they not only age physically, but they age functionally. They just don't, they're, they're not as good as an environment to teach kids in. That make sense?
It's no different, it's really no different than any property. You know, you have, 50 years is kind of the, is the benchmark for a house. If you don't do anything to a house in 50 years, you've got problems. You know, if, if it's 20 years old, our buildings are 20 years old, we have to do things to make sure that it stays and keeps an effective age that's low. You know, that's why when Boyd and Rob talk about that 100-and-some-year figure, we have to, if, if we do a renovation, it brings that down. New one brings it down a little farther. It's, you know, a little bit of difference between Martin's and us, but because they're generally leasing their properties. In this case, we own them, so it's, it's up to us to take care of them and make sure that they still are functional and, and ready for our kids to use and can be updated. It's hard to update a 100-year-old building. It costs sometimes more than a new building, so... This is a good plan.
It's good to know that.
The problem, the problem is that it's, it's a lot of money. It doesn't matter what we do, it's a lot of money.
I think the perception is that 50 years, you have to replace the building.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily place it to be.
When I do a property, 50 years is my benchmark. You know, if there's a house, it doesn't, nothing gets done to it in 50 years, it's, it has an effective age of nothing, or of 50. If you put new kitchen in it, or new bathrooms and stuff, and it's a 50-year-old house, it has an effective age of maybe 10 years, which means you can get 40 more years out of it. You know, and that's what we've done with a lot of our buildings, you know, they're getting much more than that 50 years.
So, also, with, with this plan, we're looking at operational efficiencies. There's a whole host of reasons as to why we're talking about replacing these schools that are coming up on 50 years. At a middle school, say, if we were to look at that, we will do a feasibility study that studies whether or not it's best to keep the school and remodel it, or whether it's sometimes cheaper to build a new one. So, we'll, we'll actually put a study together for every school like that and determine what the best path forward is, and then bring that to the collective board so that everybody can have comment on it.
In 50 years of wear and tear on these schools, and the schools to be in the condition that they're in, that's pretty remarkable. Some of these schools are just...
Credit to Mr. Mills and his...
Yeah, it's unbelievable, the wear and tear and the use that our schools get. And when you start, you know, just think 50 years, and I can just, I went to Williamsport, so I, you know, I can remember the wear and tear when I was a student, and I can only imagine the wear and tear today, so that's pretty remarkable.
Well, I think, as Rob was saying, that's a credit to our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, to do a lot of, lot of hard work and take great pride in their buildings and things. I think the other challenge we have over the 50-year period is a lot of code things change. So, right now, we're bringing in a lot more outside air, fresh air, into buildings, as we renovate HVAC systems. ADA is a huge one. So, you look at a school like Springfield Middle School, you start walking through there, and you realize the ramps are too steep to meet current ADA codes. Do you go in there somehow and double the length of that ramp somehow? I mean, there's several ramps in there. Or do you start over on some type of property? A lot of life safety codes have changed, so there's just a lot of things like that that we'd want to bring up to date. Definitely, safety and security would always be a big thing as we look at some of these buildings. Particularly, we're going to try to focus on these open schools. Couple them on the list, less of an issue at the school than others, and some of them really need to, really need enclosed classrooms at this point for reducing the distractions for the children and things like that. We really should do that today, yet some of these plans are 10 years out, so... We appreciate your interest and would, you know, ask you to seriously consider how do we address long-term capital improvement projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all we have for today. I think the county commissioners wanted to talk about the urban improvement project.
We did have one question, Dr. Michael, and that's, if that's okay. President Baker. Done this slide, that's 17, educational facilities master plan. Comparing to the next slide, which is Washington County approved. Approved. Not as used to your mic, sorry. Washington County approved capital improvement plan. The funding in 2019, FY 2019, went up by, over a period of 10 years, about $3 million from what was in 2017.
Is that per year, or that was over the...
That was over the span of 10 years, if I'm correct. Is that, this is about $3 million, and I know in the first year or two, it was approximately 1.2 each year, so... I'm trying to find how with additional funding, the life cycle went from 141 to 188.
It's not necessarily the, it's not the funding level, it's the span of openings. So, we projected through our capital improvement plan, a building every three years. So, 47 buildings times three is 141 years. The county's plan, as presented, was a building every four years, so four years times 47 is 188 years. So, it's not necessarily that there's more or less funding. As I recall, I think the county added for some systemic funding that was not there, let's say, in 17. So, that really is the difference, is spreading of the, of the openings of the buildings from three years to four years is what generates the change in years.
It's also important, this plan and any plan frozen in time is based on the dollars of that day. So, all these numbers that we've thrown at you today are based on today's dollars. Obviously, they're going to change. I mean, the savings could increase, but the cost could increase too, based on what the cost of future dollars is. I know the state updates its allowable cost per square foot every, every year or every other year, and so some of the increases in our requests could be because the state itself is saying, we're going to support a higher cost per square foot and pay 71% of that. So, we adjust our budgets according to the construction market that's in place at the time that we request that funding, so...
And do you have, do you go out further in one of the latter slides here? It explains the master plan, it says 2.1 million above levels shown in FY 19, whereas, again, we did increase it, and it's, I believe it's your prerogative to determine whether it goes toward new school or systemic. It's simply a funding, funding level. Do you, do you see future years beyond that 2.1? Does your, does your plan show, in addition to FY 19, what this would require?
I think, I think if I'm getting to the point of your question, we looked at what the county approved for FY 19, and we looked out through 2028 and said, our need would be $2 million greater than what the county supported in, for the FY 19 budget for capital.
Every year.
Every year moving forward.
The FY 19 capital budget includes a 10-year lookout. The years that we'll be requesting funding for these three schools, we would see that we would need $2.1 million... ...dollars per year approximately, in those years that we're building the schools. So, it's not just FY 19 that we're looking at, it's the FY 19 10-year budget. These increases are most likely out, starting in what, Chad? 22, 21, 22, 23? Those years are where those increases are, in today's dollars.
2.1 each year.
Correct.
Yes.
Approximately.
Gotcha. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, President Baker, you're saying on the agenda, we have urban improvement project Board of Education funding. Was there something that the commissioners wanted to discuss with us or ask us, or...
I thought we were just getting an update.
Yes, I believe the commissioners and staff would, would be interested in moving forward with the contract, getting more information on the current status of BISFA as it relates to the construction underway now, what the contract is and dollar value contingencies, that type of thing.
Give us an update, Dr. Michael.
Yeah, I'll probably let staff go ahead and provide an update. We, we approved the contract with Bowman Development Corporation publicly. I guess that's been several board meetings ago. I think that information was reported in the paper, what that contract was valued at. We've signed that document. We're waiting for final signatures from Bowman Development Corporation. The building, the old building is well underway as far as demo. The newer part of that building, the block building in the back, has all been removed, and they're now in the process up towards what I refer to as the apartment building, is what it resembled to me when I was in it 10 years or so ago. So, they're starting to take down that demo. Work right beside the UIP project is going on, obviously, with the theater and the alley work, and all that's moving along, and I think utility work in the back is about to start as well. So, there's three projects right on top of each other right there, and that's moving along well. As you know, our project is fully funded through a variety of sources with this kind of partnership project. We've got, you know, governor's money, our traditional IAC money, local money, Board of Education money, which is unusual to have in a project of this nature, as well as some various grants that we've been able to secure. So, funding, we're in good shape on funding. The project's a little over $19 million in total. We have about $21 million identified in, in funding. The challenge we have right now is the various types of funding and how it needs to be used, and that's got to be orchestrated with the theater and other projects, including the city, to make sure we maximize those dollars most effectively. So, that's kind of where we are at this point. I think we have a lot of unknowns. I know the theater discovered an oil tank in, in their property, and those kind of things require, you know, some other types of things you have to go through, you know, environmental issues, things like that. I think I heard with all the rain we have, there was a spring or groundwater that kind of affected three or four properties. I mean, I don't think it caused any great concern, but those are things that need to be mitigated and dealt with as you run into, which is as typical when you're dealing with old construction and marrying it up with new construction and things like that. So, right now, the project's moving along well. We think we're on schedule, and we're continuing to work with the other partners in cooperation to get the things completed on time.
Boyd, what are the three projects? The theater, the school, and the...
Well, the three projects are on top of each other. Utility work that the city's doing, so over $1 million for the utility work. So, if you're behind those buildings, there's big transformers up on some old telephone poles, there's wires galore, 10, 12, 15 wires, you know, reaching from one pole to the next. A lot of that's got to come down, get out of the way, you know, and especially if they build a plaza, which will connect all that behind the courthouse and behind all of our buildings and connect it to the, excuse me, the cultural trail. I mean, that's going to make that whole back area look completely different. So, that's one big project. Really, the part that's actually going to be underway is utility work, the theater project and our project. So, those are the three projects that I'm referencing, and they're all right against each other.
What's the dating data completion for you as well as the theater?
I don't know the date of the theater completion. Our completion is for the opening of 2020, school year opening.
I think the theater is planning fall of 19, fall of next year, I believe, for their season, I think.
Yeah, I think they were, you know, pretty much closed the theater for summer work, and then they'll reopen the theater, I think, here another couple months, you know, continue work while the theater's open for various performances, and then I think they close again next summer. When I say close, you know, do, do final work next summer, and when they open for their new season in the fall, I think is, is their target date, but I don't want, I don't want to speak...
Keller on one and Callis on the other?
Correct.
Also, you'd mentioned that Bowman Development Corporation hasn't signed their contract yet. What are they going to be responsible for?
They're responsible for their contract with Callis and construction of our building, so it's just a formality at this point, that we're waiting for their final signature on the document, but they move forward at their own risk, and we're cooperating with them, so...
Well, Rob, what was it that we've already signed? I thought we were, what contract did we enter into there when they were trying to get us to agree to a, or, you know, move forward with a contract?
We don't, we don't have a contract on either, any of these construction projects. We, we are in agreement on funding processes, and those are pretty well-known here, the board being $4 million, and other Maryland Theater funding left over from that would be sought to help assist the Maryland Theater, so...
So, in the Bowman contract, is there an amount already agreed upon?
Right, right. Our board's already approved. I mean, you guys can share the numbers.
So, during our board approval in, back in May, we approved up to 18.6 million with Bowman Development Corporation. That includes all construction costs, contingencies, A&E fees, allowances for utility connections and things of that nature, as well as the cost of the land as well. Beyond that, we have about approximately $52,000 that'll be payable to the Maryland Theater for the connecting bridge that'll be built by Morgan Keller between the theater and our new building that Bowman is building, and we have fixtures, furnishings, and equipment. So, our expected total cost is approximately $19,300,000.
And I, I should further state that what we did enter into as the county is in agreement with the state of Maryland for funding, and that has been 2.5 million to the Board of Ed, 5 million to the Maryland Theater, and that is of the governor's money. So, we do have effectual contracts or grants obligations to, to be fulfilled, yes.
So, what happens if Bowman comes back and wants a lot more money? What happens to the project?
A contract is a gross maximum price with contingencies built in. We, you know, we, we truly believe at this point that the final dollars will be less.
What's your timeline expected on getting that contract finalized?
I think it's imminent any day, but I'd have to defer to legal counsel.
Okay. Anything else on the UIP?
No, sir, not for me.
Questions from the commissioners on the UIP? Okay. Well, we're on schedule to depart, 10:05. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, President.
It's all your fault.
Thank you, President Baker.
Okay. Thank you.